This conference will now be recorded.
Good evening. I'm called to order the Wednesday, March 9th, 2022 Board of Commissioners workshops. We have all commissioners present this evening. Could all please join me in standing for the Pledge of Allegiance?
Pledge allegiance to the Friday of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. All public sessions of the Southway Health Center Board of Commissioners are electronically recorded, filed, and posted to the website for public access. Randy, would you please review the public and recording rules for tonight?
Yes, give me one second, please. Okay, courtesy of the floor for non-agenda items will be at the beginning and end of the agenda. For all listed agenda items, the board president will call for courtesy of the floor prior to the Board of Commissioners taking action on that specific agenda item. For in-person attendees, please raise your hand to be recognized and move to the podium when directed. You'll be asked to state your name and address for the record and may then proceed with asking your question. For those participating virtually tonight, please mute your microphone or telephone to avoid any background noise and interference with the meeting. The chat box feature will be active throughout the meeting tonight. If you have a comment or question, please simply type your full name and address into the chat box and the staff member monitoring the GoToMeeting platform will then unmute your microphone and you will then have the opportunity to comment or ask your question.
Thank you, Randy. So on tonight's agenda, this is a workshop. It's an informal meeting of the board to review our agenda items. So the first item tonight is item 4A. It's the DCR grant.
Correct, yes.
Thank you.
Well, a couple of pages here for every question.
So he just asked it, yeah.
Okay, there's one page.
Thank you very much.
That's it. Randy, do you have one?
I have one down here.
Yeah, that's one mic.
Yep.
We need one.
No, there we go.
No, no, there we go.
Okay. All righty. So I'm going to keep this brief. I was hoping to speak with the board in January about kind of the process moving forward, how this board would like to look at grants and potential future projects and kind of, I'm not sure how familiar the five of you are with the grant process. I know January, everybody was still getting acclimated, so then I was hoping to speak about it in February and we kind of ran out of time. So we're here in March. Time is of the essence with this topic. I can let you know that the beginning of the year is grant season, not just for DCR but for many funders. The two big ones for recreation parks and open space is DCR and also DCD. The DCR has multiple avenues that you can apply for grants, whether it's land acquisition or community development, playground rebuilds, those sorts of things. DCD is the Greenways Trails and Rec Program, GDPRD program that they have. Both of them typically come with a maximum dollar ask of $250,000. So the projects that we like to pursue would be at that $500,000 mark or less. And our ultimate goal is to hopefully apply for both grants when we're pursuing a project to try to match one grant to the other, so there's no dollars spent out of township funds. Obviously, with grants, there's no guarantee. So we do have multiple years to exhaust the funds. DCR specifically is three years when you get a grant awarded, so you need to exhaust the funds. So that being said, I wanted to come to the board to kind of get some direction as far as moving forward, what we may or may not want to do as far as grant funds. Like I said, it's kind of tricky because what you're doing is if we submit for DCR whose deadline is April 6th, we need to say, we need to have a resolution saying that, yes, we'll support this project in some way, shape, or form over the next two to three years. So whether we budget for it in 2023 or 2024, eventually we have to budget for it unless we find other matching funds. If the county sometimes has opportunities that can match those funds, sometimes the DCD grant can match those funds. So none of us have a crystal ball and it's a very fluent process, I'll say, start to finish. And I didn't want to put a big grant proposal together. DCR grants aren't your typical, you know, spend an hour or two writing the verbiage and you have your grant together kind of application. It takes many, many hours and a good amount of work to put a DCR grant application together. So I didn't want to do that work and then come to the board without having any direction as far as should I do this work or should we perhaps not apply for a grant this year? So what I put in front of you was kind of staff's recommendation of what we were looking at for a grant this year. What you see on page one is the Cover Bridge Park Master Plan. I am going to fly through these sections. So phase A there is the playground and event lawn. Let me back up. So a master plan is not a rulebook. It's a guide. So we don't have to follow everything that was put into this plan. This plan was done in 2014, eight years ago already. A lot has changed in eight years. And I'll discuss that as I go through. So for, for phase A, we did complete some of the parking improvements and the playground recommendation. We did not include the event lawn. I'll touch on that in a minute. Phase B is being taken into consideration along with the Jordan Creek Greenway Trail for trailhead and parking improvements. Phase C is one that we are looking to complete. Phase C would add a pavilion slash amphitheater and would also create a multi-purpose field which could be used for an area of sports, soccer, football, lacrosse, field hockey. There's enough space down there to make a nice small field. Phase D, we pretty much don't see as a need in the park. And I'll get to that reasoning as well as I get to that down through the other phases here. Phase E is something else we're looking to possibly combine with phase C for this DCR grant application. Phase E would create a parking lot with roughly 40 parking spaces up top along with a small to medium-sized pavilion and small restroom as well. That parking lot would give, it would be where the old yard and garden center, that the temporary yard and garden center was. And it would create a new entryway into the park, down onto the trailway, down to Pavilion 3, down to Baseball Field 4, and also for the disc golf course, which right now, if you've driven by what we call the butterfly parking lot, it's often filled with the disc golf course. They were very popular, the disc golf course. Moving right along, phase F, it shows basketball courts. Those basketball courts were actually built in phase C. If you know where the basketball courts are over by the parking lots, there used to be volleyball courts there and that's what's shown on here. From my understanding of it, they were removed before I started here, but my understanding of it is we were putting more maintenance hours into it than we saw recreational use out of the volleyball courts, the sand volleyball. So it was determined that we should move the basketball courts from the west side of the park to the east side of the park. The other part of phase F is for a dog park, which after the number of floods we've seen down there, we've had discussions and just don't feel that it would be a good spot for a dog park. We can't feel it would be more maintenance to put a fence and TCS and all of that in the floodway. It would not be a very good idea. So we're pretty much scratching phase F. And beyond that, we have a heavily used soccer field right there. So I'm going to take that approach. Phase G is many different sections of the trail, the Jordan Creek Greenway Trail. If you look in the upper left corner, you'll see a boardwalk that was supposed to be built off the already constructed section. And Randy may need to weigh in here, but we stayed on the north side of the river because that one boardwalk alone came in at a price tag of over a million dollars, I believe.
Like it was a bridge.
A pedestrian bridge.
Correct.
Yeah. Which came in at over a million dollars. So it was determined to stay on the north side, which remember earlier when I said phase D is probably no longer going to be needed. That's because phase D created another pedestrian walkway to get you back over the water yet again. But since we're staying on the north side, we're hoping to complete that, that section now. And then there's phase H, which is to be determined. That's that big, big open field off the new section of the Jordan Creek Greenway Trail. This plan shows proposed sports fields. Another in our prop plan, we're going to be looking into what is the best use for that area. So all that being said, I know I brought a lot of information at you, but our proposal here or our thought was that we could combine phase C and E. There are two, I don't want to say smaller phases, but relatively smaller phases in the grand scheme of thing when you're looking at the whole freeway and playground and everything else. For new pavilion, multi-purpose field on the north side of the park, northeast side, I'll say. And then on the southeast side, new parking lot, small pavilion, and restroom. What you'll see on the next couple of pages here, everything from the middle of your paper to your, to the left-hand side is what was in the Cover Bridge Park Master Plan. Everything under the reside revised construction cost opinion is what we are putting together of what we, what it will take to accomplish the phases. Again, there have been things that have either been removed from the plans or already completed in the plan. So you'll see a significant difference from what was originally proposed as what it would take to complete this phase to what we think it'll take to complete this phase at this point in time. And you'll see other notes as well in there, you know, removing the kayak launch. We don't feel that that's necessary to install down there and some other minor notes you'll see. So in that being said, again, I didn't want to put together the entire grant application without kind of knowing some direction as far as if this is something we would like to pursue. I can tell you, we do have three concurrent DCR grants right now. We have one for Jordan Creek Greenway Design Work. We have one for the Cola Ridge Master Plan, which we're finishing up. And we have one for the Vista Park, which will open in structure next year. So again, was just looking for direction, discussion, after you answer any questions as far as if you would like us to pursue, trying to complete phases C and/or E of the Cover Bridge Park Master Plan and start to see funding for that or if we should hold off and discuss it throughout the year and look at potential next year to apply as another option.
You said we have, the three you mentioned, we have those grants already, correct?
What was up there? I got Vista's Cola Ridge.
The Jordan Creek Greenway was designed permitting from 309 to Cedar Crest.
Can I roll those matching grants or is something else? All three are?
They're all matching grants.
So projects are covered, there's some cost of township.
No, there have been township funds where we didn't get the match for some of those.
I think the vistas was, we got 250 from.
Now we got 200 from DCR. We got just shy of 86,000 from DCD, but we will need to cover the remaining match, roughly 115,000 to complete the Vista's project. Cola Ridge was, that was a $40,000 study. We got roughly 20,000. And I'm ballparking numbers here. I think it was actually 39,400 was the Cola Ridge. And we matched that. And then the Jordan Creek Greenway as well, we matched.
And how much did the township match it?
DCR, 50% matches.
So how much was the Jordan?
That was 300,000. We matched 150,000.
Thank you.
So you showed us the scope of work. You've shown us the cost. You've told us if we could get the grant, we have three years to spend, at least the DCR money. So with that, there shouldn't be no 2022 budget implication.
No.
So are there any other factors? Why wouldn't we do this?
I'm more than happy to go after it.
Is there any cap, like you can only have so many grants or so much money?
No, absolutely not. And on the flip side, I was going to, I didn't even get there, but I know there may be a property or two that we may be interested in here in the future. And I spoke with our local DCR rep recently and obviously DCR is in very favorable land acquisition and said, you know, that is something we could potentially apply for. And we could put in more than one application. We could apply for this and the land acquisition at the same time. So there's, there's many opportunities out there. And again, I, I think it would be a great project to move forward with. Again, it's in the master plan. It's just the caveat that we don't know where, if DCD doesn't fund it, the county doesn't have funds, we don't find matching funds and DCR funds it, then we just need to have in the back of our heads, whether it's in the 2023 budget or 2024 budget, we're going to have to commit to these funds now, not knowing, you know, what's going to happen a year or two down the road. And we don't have to commit that they're all going to come from open space or capital or general or, you know, that's something we can figure out later. We just need to, when we submit the grant, we have to also provide a resolution saying, yes, we'll see this project through.
What would that amount if we got no other grants? What would that amount? We'd have the budget.
This one here, as it's looking, if you look at the very last page, it's just over that $500,000 mark. So the grant request for DCR would be roughly 250 from DCD would be the same. And then we keep our eyes and ears open for other grant opportunities if they come up over the next 12 to 24 months.
Do you have to tell them very specifically what you're going to use it for?
Yes.
So you do act as well as you can.
So if Mike applied for this this year, April 6th or April 50th, I think it's his deadline. Well, typically here in November through January, you know, towards the end of this year. And then 2023 would really be a design permitting year, so there'll be some soft costs that we'll have to be prepared for. And then, you know, during that time, we can look for other grants through DCD or other means to see if we can offset our match requirement to DCR. So some of these grants are able to match each other, which is always the goal. The soft costs are usually the tricky ones to get grants for.
When you say soft cost, what?
Engineering permitting, those sorts of things. We'll have to come up with plans. For something like this, let's say between 60 and 80. That's rough estimate.
One thing not shown in this as well with this specific project, I do have a letter from a local developer who's committed to donating the concrete foundation for the large pavilion and building the pavilion, constructing it, agree of cost to us. So that would be quite a, quite a savings for us and quite an impact match for us as far as the clinics go, could be a head match, including contributions as well.
Now we can't, towards the month of the dollar of the entire grant, correct?
I was just going to ask for a clarification. I just wanted to ask for a clarification. This is a lot. I'm new. Okay. So you want to combine C and E. C is the pavilion and the amphitheater and you want to also look at the disc golf course.
Well, C is the pavilion slash amphitheater multi-use structure. And the multi-use field there as well.
So I'm looking at C and it's right next to, right next to the water. And at our last workshop, we were talking about flooding and how this is a problem. And it's not just here. It's coming from way up north. So why are we looking to put more money into an area that's going to, why would we want to put a pavilion or an amphitheater or whatever?
Sure.
Where it's going to flood?
Well, if you look at where it's shown on this map, it's pretty far up the hill. It's closer to the basketball courts than the wood line. Very, very, very rarely floods that high. And we did take that into consideration. The pavilion that we chose, we chose for a reason. One, it will serve as multi-use. It has a 12-inch ease to have a nice A-frame opening for the amphitheater type look to it. But for flooding specifically, we wouldn't raise the concrete pad at all. It would be level with the ground. It wouldn't have any sidewalls or back wall and the foundation and footers underneath it and the rebar that's drilled down into the footers and up into the post. The gentleman that works for the company and designs these types of pavilions, when I told him where we were looking to put it, I said, you know, it would have to be the hundred-year flood to get up that high and really cause any damage. And he said, even if that happened, nothing would happen to this. So we did take that into consideration when we were looking for, you know, what structure to get.
So there won't be any damage to this if there's a flood?
Not for many, 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 many years. Yeah. It'll be, it'll be in the ground. It won't build anywhere.
I don't know if you can see the, there's a really faint dotted line kind of going along the entire creek. That's your floodway. So looking at this, they have it just, it's like right on the edge of it. We could propose to move that up a little bit further, get it out of that floodway into, you know, safer territory.
Okay. I don't know what's above this. I think it's, it's cut off. Are we close to any residences there? What's, what's above it?
That's just the farm field owned by the Brian or family. It's up above that there.
Okay. So there's no residential, there's no.
Correct. The closest residence would be Brian and her family on the other side of the map.
Thank you.
Sure. So Mike, just again, just to understand, try to understand. So the DCR grants are looking for a match. Is that right? So, and we're going to apply for other grants to, to make up for that match.
Correct.
Okay. If we do, if we're unsuccessful in getting any grants that would serve as matching, then would, is the last page showing that if there is no additional grant money other than what DCR may provide, your, if the cost of the township would be $258,075?
Roughly.
Yeah, roughly.
This I put together back in January and then I kind of put it on pause until I had the chance to sit down and have this conversation. This does not take into account the impact match as well. So it would be below the 250 mark. It would be, it would be close to it.
Yeah. Okay. So if we get, if we're successful with the DCR grants and we're unsuccessful getting the matching grants for it, is it an option not to take advantage of the DCR grant or is do they really frown on that? Or do you have to commit in that grant?
That's what the resolution would, would be that we submit with the application that we're committing to it. Now, can they come and hold our feet to the fire? No. But I'll say it is ground upon to take you a grant, take the state's money, tell them you're going to use it for a purpose and then return it. You know, unless there's a situation, you know, an unforeseen situation and, you know, I mean, they are, they're human. They would understand. But I would recommend that we don't get in the habit of.
Yeah, I think you actually mentioned that last time.
To potentially, you know, return. I think if we, if we're submitting for a grant, we should be sticking to our commitment again, unless unforeseen circumstances arise.
So the 258,000, if we're unsuccessful, would be in budget years 2023 and then, or two years past that?
Yeah, either 2023 or 2024.
So I have a question. So Cola Ridge, we're only doing the plan right now. But obviously, what, what, how much are we going to spend or what is the projected cost to get, I guess, the basic master plan for Cola Ridge? What are we looking at?
To complete the master plan, that was that grant we got. So I believe it's $39,400.
I mean, actually developing the site.
Oh, to develop the, the construction. Like I tell you, we saw our first draft cost estimate prepared by Durham and Associates and it came in higher than we expected by quite a bit. So we have asked them to really scale some things back, to relook at some of the materials, some of the options, some of the layouts, some of the design, sticking with the public feedback that we got because we got a ton of public feedback for this plan. But just seeing what they can do to reduce the cost that were in their initial budget. I personally think there may have been a slight miscommunication between the design team and the folks that were putting the budget together because they were creating more of a destination Longwood Gardens type, which we definitely don't want. So that's what we, we just explained to them a week or so ago and they aren't redoing the numbers right now.
So how high did it come in?
It was, I don't remember the exact number.
They just kept.
I think it's all over.
And what is, what, what number were you thinking or do we have a sense of what someone else might, or them scaling it back? What?
Honestly, I was kind of hoping to see roughly half of that. And I know that probably sounds like a very scary figure, but again, when you look at the Cover Bridge Park Master Plan and you look at in 2014, they were projecting that phase C alone would be 1.4 million. And we're looking at less than $200,000 to actually get done what we feel needs to get done. So these plans really kind of evolve and change as time passes and as things get accomplished. And as things that may have been relevant in 2014 maybe aren't so relevant to get done in 22.
Thank you. I appreciate that. And that's, that was my second point. First of all, I was concerned with what the township will be looking at because I'm really committed to Cola Ridge. And I, I do recognize that this plan is eight years old. And I also realize that we're beginning to update our parks and open space plan now. We're just on the edge of that. We've got the Jordan Creek Greenway going on as well as the vistas. And I'm just asking myself, from a practical standpoint, we haven't revamped this park then. We haven't looked at the township as a whole for all of our needs. And I'm asking myself, piggybacking on what Monica said, we've got a flooding issue down here that we need to deal with, which we haven't studied. I'm thankful when we get grants, they're very, very helpful and appreciative. They do potentially cause the township to pay part of the, the matching parts. So I guess I'm looking at it from not having a whole picture in front of me of here's, here's what we're committed to already for the next three to five years financially for the township. Here's what we, we may have. And then what the unknown for me is what will this study that we're doing for parks and open space, what's that going to tell us a year from now? And we've already committed to this. Are we getting ahead of ourselves with moving forward? You said at one point that one of these, it's actually DCR, it wasn't a need anymore. Will these needs change when we do the new updated comp plan for parks? When we say, hey, we need this at Cover Bridge and we prefer to put a new pavilion in another part of the township? These are the type of questions that come to mind. And for me, I think it would have been helpful and it's not a criticism, just, I think it would be helpful for us to have a picture or snapshot of what we've committed to financially already. What is the maintenance needs of our current parks moving forward, the life cycles? It's difficult to, to look at this because on the one hand, yes, a grant is great and we can accomplish some things. And on the other hand, I'm hesitant to commit ourselves not having the full picture. It's just a little bit hard to conceptualize for me to just, again, look at one little piece of the township when we've got a whole lot that we haven't really studied yet in this plan. So just some thoughts from.
What is that plan scheduled to be completed?
End of the year. I think they're looking at October, but I wouldn't be surprised if it switched to November, December. But they're, they're open.
It was supposed to try to be done at the same time as the regular comp plan, right? That's the goal is to.
Correct. And kind of coincide with the comp plan as it's getting completed. I know that they've been on, well, they've tried to be on at all. I heard there was exactly the other one.
But I think it's important. I do realize we've had obviously substantial growth since this plan was studied and been put together back then. And I'm actually very curious to see what we bring out of this new parks plan. I'm just see if there's any shift in the community's desire for what they want to see.
Sure.
I'm kind of on the fence on this.
Yeah. No, and I 100% hear what you're saying and I'm more than curious to see what it says about the rest of the township and some of the other pocket parks and other things that we can do. I will say, I would personally be surprised if they didn't recommend that we build some sort of pavilion in our shade for our residents on the eastern side of the park because there is nothing. And I'll also be surprised if they don't keep the multi-use field as a congestion just because in the meeting with our youth group with them, every youth group was just saying, we need more green space. We don't have enough space for our kids. We don't have enough yield. So I would be surprised if that aspect changed on this.
Is that field, proposed field going to include more parking?
It would not. It would not include any more parking on the northern side, other than the expanded parking in Phase B, which would be the expanded parking for the Jordan Creek Greenway Trailhead, but would also accommodate, um, residents and folks using the baseball field, basketball courts.
But we're not doing B now. So we would build these fields and there would be no?
Uh, B is a part of the design and permitting that has already been approved from.
So the, the fields, the fields in Section C already exists. The scope of work includes regrading them, making a crown for drainage, leveling them out. The smaller field you see on Section C here, very bumpy, very lumpy, not conducive to good play for soccer. So part of the scope of work, might correct me if I'm wrong, is regrading. They're not new fields. They're, they're already being used. They're just, the youth groups are, um.
It's an unplayable.
They, they would write them.
So we do have, I'm a little confused. So we have soccer fields in Section F. Correct.
See. No, we have one, we have one in F. Yep. Yep. There's still one in Section G, right on the other side of the footbridge, which is tough to see on this map. It was online. It's right in here.
F is the one that's closest to the dam.
Correct, correct. Yep.
And that one gets a lot of use.
Yeah, correct.
Is there a way to, to turn that into a multi-purpose field? Just curious.
Sure. I mean, we could, we could reline. We can reline any field. I mean, um, that, that wouldn't provide an additional field or additional space for the youth groups. That would just repurpose current, you know, current athletic field. But yeah, we could look at that.
And whereabouts in that, do we have any other soccer fields or multi-purpose fields anywhere else in town?
Just at the vistas. But again, there we have issues with the lower field where uh, youth groups used to use the lower field and they don't anymore because of the drainage issues and other issues that are there, which is, again, this is part master plan kind of brought late to that as well.
There's two small ones over at Cedar Creek Farms next to the park that we're spoiled as well. So everything's, everything's booked.
I'm sorry for so many questions, but so we're doing the vistas, we're redoing them. So we're gonna fix the drainage of those soccer fields when that gets done?
We are creating a multi-use field up top. And we are going to repurpose the lower field for more of a natural park like seven.
That's what came out of that public feedback during the master plan process.
So we're moving them to a different place, but they'll still be the same ability for our youth groups to play the same type of sports. And the vistas that they currently do, just a little bit different location, not on those grounds.
Correct. But it's actually in, in the current location where there is a field. We're just looking to improve.
Okay. So that, that will still be an option for youth groups?
Yes.
So when they, when that does get completed, which should be soon, I guess, right? We're gonna do it this year or next?
Next year.
So those fields will be playable?
Yep, we'll have a playable soccer field.
So that's gonna provide some.
Well, it's playable now. So we won't be adding any, any athletic fields there. The upper field is playable now. And the upper field, when the master plan is complete, will still be there and still be playable.
When did you give your survey results? When was the survey done?
Survey for?
For the parks. You say you've got public input. You say you've got a lot of public input. When?
For Cola Ridge?
Oh, I thought you, you meant the park, the master plan in general. Did I misunderstand?
For Cover Bridge Park? Okay. So when they did this in two thousand fourteen, they, this was a DCNR funded uh, master plan, similar to what we're going through with Cola Ridge. And the township at that time, this is pre-Mike and pre-Randy, um, also went through the, um, the required public input phase that DCNR requires. For this, what you have in front of you here, the Cover Bridge Park Master Plan.
So Mike, um, understanding this, just one detailed question now, we can go a little bit higher.
Sure.
Um, the, I'll, I'll just call it the middle column. What is the title for that column?
That would be the consultants total column. Consultants total. I, 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 that's what I would title it. They, what they did there was, if, if I try to erase that column, it, it's an Excel sheet and all the unit costs and total costs and everything on the left of that disappear.
Yes. Okay. So consultants total. Are you implying we can just ignore that column?
Correct.
Got it. Okay.
Correct.
So you have a cost. Well, that's interesting, um, because the unit cost. Yeah, I, I would have, okay. No, no problem. I asked my question about the answer. Um, if, if you were to take this in bite sizes, would you select Phase C over Phase E? Or is this one grant for this whole thing?
No, go either way. Yeah, we, we could definitely just, just do Phase C or just do Phase E if you prefer. Absolutely. That would be the plethora of the board of, of which way we want to go.
Which, which one would you select if you? Where's the county, believe, if the most bang for the buck?
I would, I would personally, I would select Phase C.
C.
For, for a couple of reasons. A, it's, it's the least costly of the two. Um, and until everybody can wrap their head around everything that we do have going on, that may be a good option. And also because we do have that impact match, um, by a local contractor to actually build the foundation and construct the pavilion for us. So, um, if we push it out two years, three years, four years, would they, would he still be willing? I'm not sure.
Right. Okay. And then, I'm looking. Okay, one, yeah, one last thing. So then the DCNR toll for that is, let's say a hundred, about two hundred thousand dollars.
Correct. So the DCNR grant would be for about a hundred thousand. And we would be, we'd start the fundraising effort to try to match that with another hundred thousand.
With grant.
With it, hopefully with another grant.
Okay.
Larry, that includes the pavilion. You're, you're looking at about fifty thousand into the township. Because you have a fifty thousand income generation as well, right? Or is that included in this? At your total projects, two hundred, one ninety-six.
Yeah.
Correct. Right. Yeah. So you're right. We'd be looking at roughly a fifty thousand dollar match with a fifty thousand dollar impact.
Got it. Now where does this amphitheater come in that we've talked about that was gonna be, wasn't that gonna be donated as well?
That's what he's, he's saying pavilion slash, amphitheater slash, same structure.
All right. Thanks.
Yep.
Sorry.
No. Um, I got a question on. So G was going to be the bridge across the Jordan Creek Greenway. I'm sorry, the, the creek, too. It was gonna go across to have the trail go in a different path of the park. So is it possible to get a DCNR grant to do that bridge? If we were to. Uh, my, the reason I ask the question is in a prior meeting last year, we talked about doing a road share over by, this is the, by, where the hard railers over that river road where, um, people on the Jordan Creek Greenway trail are actually going to share the road with vehicles. Um, and I, I was not in support of that then. And it is still a concern for me. And I'm just wondering if we're looking at doing a project here. I personally would like to see us invest funds to get our residents, our visitors to not have to share the road to enjoy the trail. And if we were voting on moving forward with a grant for anything, that would be my priority here. And one bit.
We might run into a snafu there. My own, my, I mean, my initial thought is just that we just did get a grant to design and permit the trail. And we have designed it. We have permitted it. We have kept it on the north side. It's pretty much shovel ready. So we'd pretty much be asking the same funder. We'd be saying we didn't use those funds responsibly. And we'd like to now move the trail. So we spent that three hundred thousand dollars. Got something designed, permitted and ready, but we're not gonna move forward. That might.
I understand. I, I just, I, I, I still have a concern when we talk about spending more money down at this park that we're going to be taking visitors on the trail to walk in the road for.
Yeah. I mean, I guess potentially we could look to build that pedestrian bridge and find a grant to support it. In conjunction with keeping the trail on the north side, because we do have a walking path on the southern side through the park. Um, so that would essentially just create a walking route for residents. So it's definitely something we could still consider. I mean, um, you say it was eight hundred thousand or so, four years ago or so.
Before COVID.
Probably based, probably a million plus we'd be looking at.
The thing you have to look at is when you want to put something over the creek, it's full moisture underneath. So that wood, whether it's pressure treated or not, tends to rot pretty quick. These were, these were steel. These are steel bridges, prefab bridges. The issue wasn't so much the bridge, it was the amount of concrete. Because the, the way the stream bank sets up. So they needed a ridiculous amount of concrete to actually get down to solid ground for the, the bridge apartments to sit on. And that's, I think, was a surprise for everybody, including the engineer. That it created, I think the bridge itself was a hundred and eighty, two hundred thousand dollars, but with the concrete and labor on top of everything, it just skyrocketed the price. But it's because of the way the, the Jordan Creek is set up through this area that the price just inflated because of the amount of concrete needed for these apartments. Hence the reason we shifted to the northern side, because you and I have talked about this before. Once you get across, the county's not gonna want all that pedestrian foot traffic coming across the Cover Bridge. Um, we've talked about that with them. They're not crazy about that idea. So then we'd be crossing Ware Mill Road, we'd be crossing again Ritter Road, or River Road, sorry. And then we'd almost have to build another bridge somewhere in between the Cover Bridge and the pedestrian bridge. So even if we did that other bridge at the end of Section G here, we would still need another one somewhere in between the bridge by the dam and the pedestrian footbridge to get the trail across to the southern side of the creek. Then run that existing spur all the way down, uh, to where we're talking about an additional bridge somewhere in, in Phase G. I think that's a wonderful idea. I think creating a loop through this park could be a great asset to the community. I really do. That's what people love to walk on. They love walking loops. So I think long-term goal, great idea. But I don't think that, I don't think we'd be ready for that. We're talking permit modification, major permit modifications, because we're coming to the other side of the creek, you know, and potentially installing additional bridges then. So that's gonna be an animal in itself to pull off. But we will certainly look at that, uh, road sharing area, um, to see, we'll pull those plans, see if there's any additional safety improvements we can make uh, for traffic calming signage, those sorts of things, uh, to make it the safest situation. It is a pretty standard practice throughout the nation where there's road sharing and, uh, of that with, with trails that crossing roads or running parallel to a road, bike sharing, those sorts of things. There, it's, it's a relatively short section. It's the guide rail section along River Road, if anybody's familiar with it. We're a hundred and fifty feet-ish, maybe two hundred tops. Uh, but it's a relatively short distance. But like, I will look at those plans that, I know Michael Baker designed it. They were aware of bottleneck there. Uh, I know they increased signage in that area for traffic calming, but we'll take a second look at it, see if there's any additional things we can do there. So slow traffic down. We'll, we can take a little bit of a speed limit through that, that road too. Um, I think it's a little. I think it's thirty-five. Or Ware Mill's thirty-five there. It's a, it's an odd section.
Ware Mill's thirty-five. River Road is twenty-five, because it's unposted. Any unposted road on speed limits in the township are twenty-five miles.
We'll, we'll take a second.
Which you can look at it.
Yeah. We were told at a meeting, any unposted road in the Commonwealth is fifty-five.
That's a state road.
Oh, state road.
Yeah. And the township, we have an ordinance saying it's twenty-five.
River Road is fifty-five.
Yeah, so take River Road at fifty-five.
Yeah, you're not gonna make some.
That's a challenging road with so many vehicles signing up.
So I know we've got a number of other topics to discuss tonight. And I think Mike's just wondering if we're writing a grant or not. So.
Is, is that something that, um, we decided in a meeting or is that guidance given in this workshop?
What we don't have to do is write the grant, come to a meeting.
I, I can be authorization or, or direction to do that is what I mean.
So you need a resolution.
There will be a resolution.
Correct.
So I would have to bring a resolution to the next meeting. So what I can do if the board would like, um, is start the grant, not put too much into it, um, just enough to create the resolution that I could bring and bring. If anybody has questions or wants to discuss it, you know, between now and then, I'd be happy to. Um, and I can bring it to the sixteenth, if that is the pleasure of the board. If the majority would rather retable it for the year, that's fine. If the majority would like me to start to write it, um, I'll start on it tomorrow.
I'd like to see you start writing it. That's my, my vote. I'm not voting, but right now, I mean, why, why wait a year? We can get the money now and then I think, uh, gradual of the park, which would be the most bang for a buck. And you suggested possibly C.
Yeah.
Which comes in at a hundred thousand plus, you get the fifty thousand in kind, which is pretty nice.
Yeah.
And you don't know what's gonna happen in two, three, four, five, six, down the road at any time.
Correct.
I mean, that's pretty healthy in kind. When it would be a hundred thousand out of our pockets, it's gonna be fifty, if we don't get another grant and match that.
Correct.
So for a two hundred thousand dollar project, that fifty thousand is, you know, we're getting, yeah, as long as we're not jeopardizing, as Monica brings up, more flood issue problems down the road. That's, we talked about flood remediation last meeting, last workshop.
Yep.
You know, so we don't want to do, you know. You, you understand.
Absolutely.
So that's just what I was.
I really hope my name just jinxed myself and we get the hundred-year flood like two years after we built this. But, um, even if we do that, they, they said that, um, you know, it shouldn't be effective. And I, I, I agree with Randy. We could look to not put it exactly right on that line. If we could shift it just a little farther north, I'd, I'd feel even, even, uh, better about it. I mean, this last flood that happened down there, I mean, the, the floods didn't get up onto the basketball courts or anywhere up that high. So.
It did last summer.
It did. Yep. One time, last summer.
The basketball courts were under the line.
Yeah.
So it's.
Yeah.
I would just, I would personally prefer, I mean, of course, I'll defer to you, but I would personally prefer to have this plan updated as we're going forward with it this year. Having the new snapshot of it with the current weather that we've had. I mean, things may shift and things may change and, and I don't know. I would just like to see that finished before we go forward with anything right now. That's just my opinion. Because you say hundred-year flood and we've had quite a few of them, you know, it's, the patterns are really, they've been a lot more severe. So that's my input.
Dave, are you suggesting for, uh, a grant application for Phase C only?
Yeah.
Okay. Yeah. No, I just wanted.
But I don't, I don't, I, I, we have, if we don't walk on air with a consensus, I don't vote consensus.
Yeah.
Why, why haven't we do it?
Right.
So why come to it? It'd be a C meeting and get shut down if we beat up there.
Yeah. No, no, I was just.
Yeah, only, only the C.
Yeah.
Okay. Yeah. And then as, as like Monica said, I'm continuing to progress with, with the, with the further along with the plan to keep going.
Yeah. Yeah. I, I'm good with that. Um, I, I have confidence that you're going to place this in, in the best possible location. And it's the least expensive way to make progress, at least this year. That's my thought.
Like where is the? So do you want to go in C? Is it all the way at the right hand?
We can, we have time to fine tune the placement of it. Where it's shown on here is that little black box kind of uh, right off the corner of the multi-use field.
To the left of the field, that little time?
Correct. Yep. And as Randy said, that, that dotted line kind of right under it, that's a little tricky to see. That's, that's the floodway line, um, that it's kind of right on. But we do have space in northern.
And again, with that pavilion, there'll be no additional parking for any of that there. So where will people park? I'm just curious. I want to pull up on the.
Park for?
Pavilion's gonna bring people and amphitheaters, so.
Sure. Well, I mean, like we have our, we bring in a portable band trailer now.
Right.
And we have concerts. And we park, uh, on the multi-use field there and the parking lots, both where we are and up north of where the amphitheater is working. So as far as parking, nothing would change. We hold events and things down there. Yeah, nothing would change as far as the parking.
We do have one public comment. Uh Robert Hedges, seventeen or seven, fans crossing. Rob, you can go ahead and unmute now if you're into.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay, uh so my my first question, I think, was just answered. The that white arrow is now pointing where the pavilion's gonna go, right next to that picnic area? Oh, white arrow moved.
Right here.
Okay, all right, good. Thank you.
Sure.
The grants that we're talking about, are they going to be written specifically for these each individual project? Or is it for covered bridge in general, or is it for the whole parks system in general?
No, as far as specific project.
Okay, so you can't like write it as a generalization to use it for whatever we want. It has to be written to for a specific for for area C or area D or whatever.
Correct. Yeah, they want to see a scope of work and a and a budget for that scope of work. So what they know their funding is is accurate.
Okay, thank you very much.
Yep.
Well, I think Chief's still in training. Do you want?
What are you going to do, Mike? I'm not sure. Um. There's obviously some divide in the room, so I'm. I'm fine writing it. I'm fine not writing it. I'm really hoping for some direction on on which way we may want to. And if it comes down to it, like I said, I could start the application and and bring the resolution to meeting on the sixteenth. But I'd rather not do that if we're not thinking that, you know, we're gonna go forward. If we're still uncertain, like I said, if everybody wants a week to think on it, and then rather I do that and then, you know, everybody can think on it. Give me a call if you have questions, that sort of thing.
It seems to me, I certainly appreciate everything Diane said, you know, she spoke that length about it. Um, and it's consistent with, I've said for two years. Where's the master plan and, you know, how 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 does every individual project fit in? Um, so I I think it's very wise to have the master plan. You know, in order to make decisions on any one specific project. On the other hand, um having had the conversation. Reducing the scope from five hundred thousand down to a hundred thousand where we have half the money already. Seems prudent to do that. As David and Brad had said, so. Sam, I'm concerned about the flooding too, but uh. The whole the whole parks are susceptible to flooding, right?
Mm-hmm.
Right, so.
Yeah, I mean, the floodway is, you know, closer to the creek. There are sections of our park that are outside the floodway.
Yeah.
Can you have her just kind of chime in? You guys have to go clean out all the time. So this area that we're looking at in C, I mean.
Where that pavilion is to be placed. I have only, since I've been here through the four floods we've had down there, I've only seen it get up that high once. And that was the one where it was substantial water over the basketball courts. Normally it'll get into the field, but it doesn't get up that high. I mean, it takes a lot of rain to get it up that high.
So it'll get into the field that they're proposing there at C then?
At C? Yeah, yes, it will get into there.
And what does that do to public works with cleanup?
Oh, we just clean up the debris. If there's logs and that, we clean it up. If there's. Some sediment and that, we take the York rake in on the tractor, put it in a pile, load it up, get it out of there. And then what we try to do to get the field back to level as can be is we let it dry out a little. And then we take one of our rollers down that we use on Blacktop, and we'll roll the field to try to smooth it out. So besides man hours of cleaning it up, there's not much cost involved in the clean.
Again, those those fields already exist. That's probably why they put them there in the first place was it's it's just grass, so there's water rolling over the grass as opposed to, you know, a different structure or something like that.
I. I can see that there's. You know, potentially a benefit to do this, but I I would say that I would not be in favor of moving forward with this at this time because I I do feel like we need to take. The time to get our plan together. Update what we're doing now with all our parks and have a comprehensive look of the entire township. Have a better, clear path forward. That's just how I think, to be able to look at. The costs before us and the options and where our best to prioritize spending. But I defer to the rest of the world. Thanks for the presentation, Mike.
Absolutely. Thank you. I'm a phone call away. If anybody has any questions or wake up tomorrow with a right idea or or, you know, something something you thought of in reading a call.
Thank you. I appreciate it.
So I'm gonna jump over and grab Chief real quick, see if he's available. If if he's in the middle, something we may get to.
Just going to.
To adjust this real quick.
Mike, regardless of the outcome, I appreciate you doing the hard work that you do.
Sure.
You know, it it actually gives us the information we need to make a decision.
Yeah.
Without that.
Well, again, I wish it wasn't coming down to a time-sensitive matter, which it is obviously. I was hoping I could have spoken with you in February and we could have had some more time. Yep, discussed a little more, but.
So thank that line, definitely.
Sorry. So I wish it, it's the right level of.
Correct.
Is everything over?
I think so.
All right, we're good.
Just for you, Chief. Randy, would you like me to stay? I think the next, the next three should be pretty quick, so. Civil Service background, we're gonna start.
Yeah, I mean, if there's. Any specific questions on civil service we've been meeting today, um if you're not familiar, it's essentially the process that we use for hiring. Hiring new hires, um how we test, how the process works. Um, for promotions, it's also the same way, uh permission to test, go through to certify a list to make sure that we're we're doing it appropriately. Following within the guidelines, not discriminating against anybody. And one of the the probably the biggest unknown to most people is with civil service, if there's a choice, if there's discipline handed out and they choose not to grieve it. Through um essentially an arbitrator at the very end of it, they have the opportunity to challenge their discipline with the Civil Service Commission. So they can actually come up to them within ten days of receiving discipline, file an appeal with them. And that way they would have to build the defense to the Civil Service Commission, and then they hear our case, their case, and they make a decision whether or not. The discipline is just or not just. That's probably the biggest thing that most people don't understand about civil service because it's hardly ever used, especially with union shops. Um, the union or FOP, whoever represents, uh typically will go through a grievance process and they can get a third step hearing. They can go to arbitration. There's a lot more, see bites at the apple, doing it that way because they might lose if they they grieve it, they can send me a paper, I go. I don't agree with it, refuse it. They can take a third step hearing, go to essentially would be the township manager or HR director. Kind of plead their case and they go, eh, I either agree with it, come up with a determination what that discipline either should or should not be. And then if there is still discipline, they can now take it to arbitration with an attorney and essentially have a small trial in front of a neutral arbitrator. And then that would be a a binding resolution whenever that arbitrator comes down to. So there's different avenues with it, which. That gives them the most bites at the apple, which is why most people that that take that route. Go to them because clearly they know that Civil Service Commission, we deal with them on a monthly basis. There's a personal relationship, so they don't want to roll those dice. They just don't. But that's probably the biggest thing, that's probably the unknown about. Um, civil services, if there's any specific questions, I can be more than happy to try to answer that. It's a twenty seven page document. It just essentially lays out the whole process of of testing, hiring, um how it goes down. So. But and anytime we change these rules, what I do essentially goes to the the Civil Service Commission. Make my request to change those rules and then it would be put in front of the Board of Commissioners to adopt those by ordinance. So and resolution. So that's, any changes that would happen here would have to come through here to make that happen. So. Are there specific questions on civil service?
I'm just curious. I know first class township code structures civil service and then that document you're referring to is an ordinance that township.
Yes, ours is. Yeah, yeah. It's been changed a couple of times since I've been here, um just with. Some small language, just to incorporate the the testing consortium that we do now. Um, if you're not familiar with that, we do, uh we're part of the Leea County Consortium List, whereas previously we conduct our own testing. Um, we give a written test, physical test, we do our oral board, and then we would have our civil service certify that list. And what we've run into over the years is less and less people wanting to be police officers. Now we have the same crew taking our test. Paying fifty dollars to take our test. Pay fifty dollars to take it all. Fifty dollars to take a max. So we're losing candidates because they don't want to pay that money. As twenty two, twenty three, twenty four year old kid, spending hundreds of dollars to take a test to compete with same people. We decided as a county besides the city to enter into a pool, we all paid upfront. What we typically ended up being cheaper than what we normally pay individually as a township, we're spending about eight to nine thousand dollars to test. Um, every time we did the test because we give a written exam, physical exam, and then through the oral boards. Um, right when I first came here, the only way they would certify the civil service list of twenty five people was to polygraph everybody as well. That's four hundred and seventy five dollars per person. Costs a lot of money to certify that list. So it would cost essentially twenty seven thousand dollars to potentially hire one person. Um, we got rid of that aspect of it, so now we only polygraph after the list is certified. And now we do that upon a conditional offer of hire when we do it. But the consortium, essentially we're getting the same pool of people. Now it's costing them less, so we've started to get more people put in for it as far as just individually, if we did it ourselves now, somebody says. Whitehall pays more, I'm gonna pay fifty dollars to take their test versus South Whitehall. Um, so we have the same pool of candidates. It costs them less money. Um, and it doesn't cost us a dime to test. Um, it's completely paid upfront. We have twenty thousand dollars in account as Leea County Chiefs that we use for. The testing process as well as working on a kind of a campaign to to kind of put some recruitment videos out there, advertisement, things like that, um to try to get more people. Um, and it kind of saves us time. It's it's hit or miss. It's uh it's good and bad because, again, it's one list, essentially the same people that are on Whitehall. Hey, so we're all we're all competing, but we were competing before. Um, now what happens is, since we all talk and they all sign waivers, if Whitehall. DQ somebody in the background, they give them a polygraph, they fail it, we know they're a thief, we know the evidence, we know that. We no longer even bother sending them for our own polygraph. We take their information that they've spent time and money on. We take it, we save that four hundred and seventy five dollars, we save two, three, four, five weeks of doing a background investigation on them. We take that information green from there and we just qualify them ourselves. And we we don't have that problem and we start to pull out those candidates. So. That's one of the benefits to it. But again, we're competing again consistently. So it's kind of a who can strike first and who has the the best department, the best package for people. So that's one of our benefits there. Um, I know Whitehall hasn't hired anybody for two lists now. Um, we've taken a couple of their people. Uh based off of just atmosphere or environment and overall working conditions and they would rather be here than there, quite frankly. So that's a benefit we have. Questions on the consortium? Anything else on civil service all? You're welcome to talk about that. Intergovernmental, you guys, everybody saw the intergovernmental. Um, I think it's pretty cut and dry. This is essentially the same thing that we have in place already with Upper MacGyver Township. Um, we work back and forth with them on a regular basis. We currently work with Whitehall on a regular basis as well, being next door. This is just essentially another level of insulation for us as a township to continue doing what we're doing, but having it spelled out. Um, like, well, the other night we had, last week, we had the guy. We were gonna arrest him, but he was also a mental health commitment, barricaded himself in his apartment over at Penncrest. We were there for two hours, the entire shift working. In the meantime, we had other calls coming in. Whitehall handled it, a domestic for us and some other things. So this just kind of puts it on paper and spells it out and covers us for doing it. Besides the the mutual aid agreement that just got the state passed. So typically with that is more based off of emergency clauses. This now covers us. If they need us, you know, we did it for the potential protest we had after the Lillie shooting. Um, we had a lot of agencies in here in South Whitehall, no agreement. So this, I think, just buttons us up liability-wise and gives us the the ability to pull resources or give resources where needed. So I think it's a kind of a no brainer to me, but if there's anything specific in here, anybody has any questions on, I can try to answer that. And this was drafted up by our solicitor's office. Jennifer all approved, drafted itself.
So Chief, um, you said that, and also on your email, did you know where that was attached? Just very, very briefly, how does an agreement like that provide extra layer? Of insulation from liability? How does that, how does that work?
This spells out flat out if Whitehall comes in here and they help it, they help us. And one of their officers gets hurt. There could be a claim that, hey, we're working for South Whitehall Township, therefore that officer's, you know, whether it be overtime, whether it be medical, any of that. There could be a challenge on that because you requested that.
And Whitehall, Whitehall.
Yeah. Yep. Yeah, so if one of our officers would go to to Whitehall and get hurt over there.
Right.
We could technically go after Whitehall and say, eh, you know what, they got hurt over there, that's on you now. Because we're there to help you. This spells it out. Um, that way there's no defending it, no spending money to defend it. And it really draws the line as to whose responsibility is what. So that's that, I think, is the biggest asset of having that because it spells out.
You have a million dollar living in two hundred thousand.
Yeah, yeah, all the insurance, yeah, yeah, all that's in there.
Is that the same as Upper MacGyver?
Yes, it's pretty much the same document, just it's tweaked a little bit based off of um the change in first class township code from, I think, it, the other one had to be adopted by motion. This could be motion or resolution. Other than that, it's pretty much identical. So and it worked out very well with with Upper Mac. Um, we're constantly back and forth with them. They actually covered for us when we had the fiftieth anniversary, um, already for the fiftieth anniversary of the Police Department. We actually had Upper MacGyver control of the township for us, and we just paid them to do it. So. And then that way they can make arrests. Um, otherwise, if Whitehall comes, they have a domestic where there's an arrest. They have to document everything, wait, send it to us, and one of our officers has to go file charges. This way they can just do it, handle it. We get a copy of it. We don't have to go to court. We don't have to be kind of that person that waits to file all the paperwork. They can actually legally do it themselves. And if we had a, you know, say we end up with a lot of traffic problems, things like that, we can actually get them to come in and do traffic assignments with us. Um, if there were any parts, something major happens there, we can get them to come in and help cover things like that. So.
And without an agreement, you're sort of, you're already working with Whitehall, so the state would cover us or some of us?
Yeah, a little bit, yeah. Um, there's there's a mutually law in effect, but it's essentially based around emergencies when you're not, and you have to, there's certain parameters behind. Um, you have to make the official call to do it. Um, you know, God forbid a major incident happens, the last thing our our people are thinking about, make sure you call for mutually. People just send them out of call. Um, that's kind of the, it's a catch-all to make sure that nothing bad happens.
And is there a reason why this wasn't done at the same time as we did it on the country since?
Upper MacGyver was done before I came here, so that's been in effect um for five plus years. Um, so when we started looking at it, and typically we use that, but with just the way things work, um, my intention was to to essentially get one of these in place with. Everybody that borders us, anybody that comes in here, I think it just covers us in the long run. And Whitehall was on board with doing it. Um, city's another animal, um, haven't broached that yet, um, but that probably potentially could be another issue. Um, for the future to to look at that with them as well, so.
Do we go into Allen Town which?
We do.
It would, it would, would it be beneficial then for us also?
Yeah, it would. We go in there more than they come out here.
So then it would be beneficial for them, for us to have it for them.
Yeah, I think it would. And that's, um, I wanted to make sure that we could kind of iron some of these things out, and then my next approach is gonna be with that, to do that. Especially, you know, traditionally every year New Year's Eve when they're slammed and swamped, we're in the city for two, three hours sometimes handling calls for that. So I think it's it's due time that we approach that. And I think now with a new mayor in there and some of the other things going on, I think it's a pretty good time to to strike to do that, so.
And how does South Whitehall, with like Lower MacGy having state police, do we enter into, for example, do we ever go into Lower MacGy and how do we?
Only if they ask us to, um, very, very rarely. If, if something leads in there that we're working on already, we will. But typically state police handle that on their own unless they don't have anybody available, which is far and few between for them because that's actually a zone in Lower MacGy for state police. They have three cars assigned just to Lower MacGy versus the rest of the county. They kind of spread them out. Um, but they actually have three patrol assignments in Lower MacGy themselves. So they typically will pull other people from North Whitehall, Lynn, Heidelberg, wherever, to put them down there before they would call us. So, but it's certainly something to look at. Um, I don't know if the state police would enter into something like this though. It's, it's, we have a trooper there now. It's kind of see how it works, but I don't, I don't know if that's gonna happen. So.
In the long term, uh, long run, if we're looking at Allentown as the next form of adjacent bordering, please tell me, what would be would Heidelberg and Main Beach, something?
That would be state police though, also.
Okay, so would that be it then? So we have North Whitehall, Upper Mac and then that town?
I will give a heads up that Upper Stockton Township is actually working on something like this on a temporary basis. Because the US Senior Open is coming to Stockton Valley Country Club this year, which means they're gonna draw thousands of people to Stockton Valley Country Club. And they're going to need additional officers to help with security, traffic. Um, the chief's goal down there is to give his own people the traffic, the crappy details, and then have people that are gonna come to help them on the course, helping with what they need security for some of the players and things like that. Um, just felt it was um, more appropriate to have people that are coming out of their own jurisdiction and coming there to help, to give them the better assignments. And be better draw. So, but that's, they're working on that, uh, currently. I guess the, the good news on that is Phil Nicholson is not playing, so they expect the draw from fifty thousand people a day down to about twenty to thirty thousand. So it won't be nearly as bad. So.
I'm gonna be a marshal on the sixteen hole. Yeah. So I'll, I'll keep your phone number.
Case, because originally I told him I would be walking with Phil, but and that would all be reversed. I'd have to, so and you'll find, yeah, yeah, that's, that's written. And that's why it's kind of a a distinctive MOU for that specific case. It's not an overall one. Um, but that would be specific to doing that for them because that would then encompass payment reimbursement and things like that. So. And I would anticipate in that there's a possibility that the PGA would then cover some of the insurance issues as well. So I think that's what he's working on.
Did mine work?
Yeah, yeah.
And money can get down to a secret.
I'm just curious, the list of how we can count the list, does that mean the two of us were already gone through the academy or there was further something?
Yeah. It's, um, it's us, Whitehall and Upper Stockton and Amayus are the only departments in Lehigh County outside of the city that will pay to put somebody through the academy. So we get more candidates. Um, if somebody like, uh, Upper Mac doesn't even sign it anymore, and I think they have seven people on their list. And they just, but no, actually they hired one, I think. Um, but yeah, they get a lot fewer. Um, Slatington, we get like four people put in. Um, Caddy gets a handful. Um, actually Caddy, I believe may have just started this time around where they'll put you through the academy as well. Cause they can get it, but then, you know, some of the shame is that there are some part-time police officers working in municipalities that look and see they're working there on a part-time basis. They don't spend the primary energy or the money to go through a complete background process because you need to put a person in part. Um, and I look at some of the names and I go, we disqualify them. How are they working there? Um, I, I don't wanna go down that road. Um, I won't go down that road, but it's, uh, yeah, we, we definitely get the better candidates. Um, especially I think the way we do our process, we talked about it a little bit today at the civil service meeting. Um, there's been talk about trying to streamline even more by doing a joint interview process with multiple. That way essentially then your list truly is the same across the board because we each have our own individual list. But we do our own interviews, which we come up with the questions and one of, a big part of that, which is worth twenty-five points is your background, where you're from, what you know about South Whitehall. And you can really through that personal interaction in a room, you can start to read somebody pretty well, especially if somebody lives here on Walbert Avenue. They typically score better than the person that came here from Camden, New Jersey, or from somewhere outside of the Lehigh Valley. Um, they kind of get points for that. So I think it's a way to steer our list in a right direction, kind of. So subjective kind of opportunity that we have.
Anything in the chat?
Nothing in the chat.
Thanks, Chief.
All right. Thank you. Okay.
I'll see you.
Yes, you're welcome. It's fun. A little back then. Strange, um, which actually that's something we do on a monthly basis. I'm, you got, yes, four months now. So. Um, so yeah, we're doing cultural diversity and district leasing in my eyes right now. With the Atlanta State Police Department, so it's very, very interesting stuff. So, but we are definitely the department to train some vice men. Yes, so.
Have a meeting.
Thank you. Enjoy it.
Mr. Herb.
Yes.
Last one for the night.
All right, we, uh, the turnpike is replacing the Tillman Street Bridge. All the way out by Lincoln Tech. Uh, we have a little issue here. We were gonna stay on the bridge and now the bridge has come back to, the turnpike has come back to us and said, we cannot use their contractors, which we were under the assumption the whole time. We were in their primary bid. They don't wanna put us in their primary bid. So my thing is if we stay on the bridge, I gotta get a bid spec out ASAP. Uh, coming off the bridge, I have to get this accomplished ASAP also. So I've been working day and night on this to try to figure out to come off the bridge. Because ultimately the turnpike has a contract with us that they can kick us off of that bridge in sixty days whenever they want to.
Oh, yeah, again, which bridge is this?
It's the one that's highlighted. It has one thousand two one. Uh, so we are suspended on the bottom of that bridge right now. It currently feeds gravity. With the new profile of the bridge, we can no longer be gravity anymore. So we are gonna have to put a two inch force main in there in case it, in case that ever breaks. So we don't have sewage leaking. The other issue we have, if we stay on the bridge, I don't have equipment to make this repair. So we are going to have to call in contractors and it's gonna get very pricey along with just the amount of money it's gonna cost for traffic. For the full scope of the work to stay on the bridge is roughly between six hundred thousand and seven hundred thousand dollars. Which the turnpike has not answered if they are gonna reimburse up to fifty percent. There is a good possibility that they will. The other snag is on staying on the bridge. No longer can use our contract. We need to put a bid spec out right away, but this money is not budgeted for this year. Originally we were told this project was gonna go in twenty twenty-four, I mean payout in twenty twenty-three. Possibly beginning of twenty twenty-four. Now they are fast tracking it. They're ahead of schedule. They want the work done by this October. Yes, I tried to strong arm him a little bit and say, well, what if I do nothing since that wasn't the timeframe? And the gentleman held up the contract and said, I kick you off. So I have no leverage as long as he has that contract. Now, this is work that is manageable to be done to come off the bridge. I have already have meetings with Upper MacGy Township. Uh, I have met with LCA already. I have phone calls into Bob Corby and DEP who handles the planning module. I have talked to Lissel already over at LCA. Everyone is on board to help us to get off of the bridge. The major hiccup could be DEP wants a planning module. Which when I talked to Mr. Corby today, I told him, I need this thing fast tracked. So I can meet the October deadline before they just kick me off the bridge. The cost difference from staying on the bridge to rather coming off the bridge is to come off, the total expenditure is three hundred to three hundred and fifty thousand dollars for everything. And what I am gonna propose to the turnpike, and I don't know if they're gonna do this, is if they would give me a fifty percent match of coming off the bridge. But I don't have an answer to that yet. And we don't even have an answer if we stay on, if they're willing to give us the fifty percent. Because in that contract, it does state that any work that has to be done is a hundred percent required by us. So I don't see them doing that because they are picking up stuff for other people already at fifty percent. But they could come back and say, no, we have this contract. We're not paying it.
But you have an opportunity to get off the bridge.
Yeah, which is the smart thing to do. Just because if that breaks, I have to get crews in here. We're gonna be underneath the turnpike, I mean, we're gonna be underneath the turnpike bridge. And we have Tillman Street traffic all at the same time. And for us to work under that, we are gonna have to shut lanes down on the turnpike. Cause we're gonna have to suspend from the air or to get it even more expensive to keep the turnpike open. We're gonna have to get one of those trucks in here that not everyone has that can suspend around the side and underneath to make repairs. And at the same time, we're gonna have to figure out how to bypass from all this sewage. So it's not just spewing out of cars.
So Herb, or re, if we get off the, uh, the bridge, you, we're redirecting the flow?
To Upper MacGy's line, which ultimately ends up in LCA's trunk lot.
So we'll need a transmission agreement likely with Upper MacGy.
Lower MacGy, LCA. Yes. So it would be a four-party agreement.
Which is typical. We have them with Copley Whitehall. We have all the.
South area already also.
It's not, it's not unique. We'll, we'll say that.
And Upper MacGy's on board?
Yes, we talked to, uh, to Mr. Hybuck. He's on board with it. Lissel and Phil Dupow from LCA are on board to help us out as much as possible. And that number I gave you of three hundred to three hundred and fifty thousand is an outsourced.
It's contracted now.
If I pull some strings, tighten everything up a little bit in-house, I could possibly lay this pipe. What I have to do is shoot grade out there and survey all this. There's two options. The first option is the way it's laid out here. With the, the red line on the map you have in front of you. The other option is where we come down from Liberty Mutual Insurance, we keep coming straight down right here. There is another manhole in the cul-de-sac. So we might not have to make the bend there if we can acquire the easement to come straight down and come in the back, which will even lower costs more because it's a shorter run.
Can you show me?
That red line that's right next to the turnpike right there?
Right here.
Yep. Instead of taking that bend to your left, you would come straight down the backside of the cul-de-sac.
This way.
Yep, and turn right into the back of the cul-de-sac and connect right into the manhole that already exists. Which we, when we talk to Upper MacGy, they think that's about eight feet deep. So this pipeline would go from eight feet probably to a five foot bury. Which would be very manageable to handle for us.
And keep it gravity.
Yes, and we stay gravity.
So our, our preference is to, to get off the bridge and see if we can work out these agreements in, in short time. Um, ultimately, we just wanted to bring it to your attention. It is something we'll have to discuss, uh, budgetary need for, you know, with the, with the store budget.
Either way, if we stay on, it's a budgetary issue that is not in this year's budget. Because we thought we were gonna have to do the expenditure in twenty twenty-three or possibly even twenty twenty-four.
So tonight we're just giving you a heads up and once we have everything.
Once we have our final way to lay it out, we will come back to the board at a meeting.
Yep.
And we'll have to either ask for a budget transfer. I am looking at ways in-house to pop, to try to cover some of it. Like we have lining for three hundred thousand dollars this year. Well, maybe I bump that to a hundred and fifty thousand. And if we lay all this pipe in-house, the other hundred and fifty thousand might cover it. And we might not have to go to the reserves or something like that.
You're gonna have the manpower to do it.
I will figure that out.
Because you, you've lost the grass cutting.
Yes, well, that's parks. This is coming out of water and sewer. And in my head, how I have a plan to get this done quickly is our paving is coming shortly. I'm opening the milling bid on the fourteenth. So I will be coming the sixteenth with approval to award that milling bid. So the paving will be done there already by the time this project would start. So I would just rent one excavator, let the water and sewer guy lay the pipe, and I still have enough people to get the water testing done, the station maintenance done. And I would shift some of the street guys to keep trenching ahead of them. So that way it's a non-stop. The excavator can straddle the trench, lay the pipe in while they keep digging on grade. It would speed the whole process up quick.
So this, this job including, well, all the aspects, including the depth and everything, gets within South Whitehall's expertise?
Yeah, I, yeah.
It's not extraordinary?
No, we laid the sewer pipe right out here for this renovation. We continued to lay the pipe. We installed all the hydrants out here. We dug ditches. We laid the grade right out here. It's very, it's, I'm not gonna say it's very easy. It's, it's plastic pipe, so we're not laying huge concrete pipe. It all seals together and locks. So again, it makes it.
What size lines?
This, well, that has to be determined. What, what has to be determined also before we can submit the planning module is we have to look at every zoning aspect out there. So like Lincoln Tech is there. We know their flows, but say Lincoln Tech says we're going out, what would, if you put a strip mall in there with a couple of restaurants, the flows go up. So we have to make sure everyone can handle those flows at max peak time, whether it was built to its full capacity.
So we're gonna be looking at worst case scenario, redoubling in the future to make sure the pipes size that.
So we looked at the Lincoln type, Lincoln Tech site already, which would be a strip mall with a restaurant. So what I'm gonna compare the flows to is off of like the Kmart site. The old Kmart site there that has a couple of restaurants, it has a gym, and go off of what their flows are. And that will give us a great idea of where we're at. LCA thinks we're gonna be able to get this done. The hiccup is gonna be DEP. Because I have to get through the planning commission also, which I'm not too worried about that. We have a good working relationship with them. The, the one that scares me is Corby. He is not very fast at moving. But when I spoke to him today, I was basically begging him, I need your help on this because I have to get off of this bridge. And he said he would do his best to try to help us.
So I have to ask the safety question. Um, does the township have safety standards for, you know, any pipeline installations? And like the, the angle when shoring up and?
Yeah, anything that goes over four feet, I'm sorry, five feet, we have to put shoring in the hole. Which we will, we have the shoring. What we use is we use three quarters plywood and we have the jack stands that hold it out.
Yeah.
Yes, safety is our number one thing. Like the other night, we were out on a week right out here at Calvary Baptist Church on Tillman Street. It started pouring and the wind picked up. I got the guys out of the hole. I said, we're not staying in the hole when it's raining. This thing's gonna collapse. Five minutes after we got out of the hole, the whole trench collapsed. So safety is number one. I want everyone to go home to their families at night. I'm not gonna jeopardize that.
Did, did the guys ever wear safety belts?
In the holes?
Yeah.
No, you can't because you have to bend over to work on the pipes. The buckles are in the way.
Yeah.
But when they are in the hole, they do have safety glasses on and hard hats in case someone lifting with tobacco over the set of valve or something would fall. They do have their protective stuff.
The ocean considers that in closed space, don't they?
A trench?
Confined space?
Confined space, I'm sorry.
No, not a trench. A confined space is, is if you're going down into a hole and there's only one way out. That's a confined space. So like when you go in a sewer manhole or a storm manhole, that's confined space entry. You have to have an air pack going in our township to go in. A trench, they. In our township to go in. A trench, they don't consider confined space because you have two ways of exit on either side of the trench.
Okay. What do you think the possibilities are of getting into the the cul-de-sac?
I think it's very good. And how, we also have to obtain easements for this from the the corporate people. But here's the kicker for it. Right now, the Liberty Mutual Insurance Building has a pump station. Which they don't like being on the pump. They actually have to pump up towards Lincoln Tech right now. So where their sanitary line comes out, I would just make that connection for them with the pipe and put them onto gravity. So nine times out of ten, they're gonna grant us this easement.
So you'd be here.
Yes.
When do you sleep, Herb?
I don't worry. Sleep makes me no money, so I don't worry about sleep.
Are there any other questions on this? Anything in the chat?
Nothing in the chat.
Herb, thank you for explaining all this to us and good luck as you continue working with PennDOT.
And I will keep up with Randy on this with his weekly report. So as we keep going through these meetings with LCA, Upper Mac County, Lower Mac County. We will keep you all informed of how we're making out with this project.
Perfect. We appreciate the communication. That is the end of our discussion items for tonight. Uh next agenda item is non-agenda items. Courtesy of the floor is the next. Is there anyone on the ritual call, member of the public who would like to speak on a non-agenda item segment? So please signify in the chat box.
Nothing in the chat.
Seeing none. Uh there is no executive session. At this point, I would need a motion to adjourn.
Motion.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye. Motion is adjourned.
Thank you, everyone.